Council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Moore, gotcha. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Seicho Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waguspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunney. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Your Honor. Haddon here. Rodriguez. Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez. All right, Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance will be recited by Alderman Daley-Thompson.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, but before Pastor Dr. Ricky Allman of the Apostolic Church of God speaks, I want to make reference to the events of last night. As some of you know, a police officer and a 15-year-old boy were shot as a result of an attempted bank robbery from the city of Displanes that then the pursuit came into the city of Chicago. I had an opportunity to visit both with the officer and the family of the young man, and Alderman Gardner, I believe, was also both at the hospitals for that event. I would just ask you to keep both the officer, the 15-year-old, and their respective families in your thoughts and prayers. It's a devastating thing when we have something like this happen. We can't treat it as just business as usual, because it's not. And particularly for the young man and the officer, their lives will forever be marked by the events of last night.
Let us pray. Father, in this season of Thanksgiving, we come before you with an attitude of gratitude, thanking you for your goodness in our lives and your grace over our city. Father, we pray for our mayor that you grant her your wisdom and understanding, as she provides leadership for our citizens. We pray for the 50 older persons, that you would give them your compassion, your courage, and your commitment to stand on the behalf of their wards. And then we pray for this council, that you grant them a spirit of cooperation and collaboration, so that they can serve as catalysts for the growth and the progress of every citizen and every community. In Jesus' name we pray.
We will now commence the period of public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Pursuant to the Chicago City Council public comment process, time is not transferable to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for automatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. Thank you. The first speaker is Mr. Pat Murray.
Good morning. I came down here today to address the Bobby Rialmo decision by the police board, seven or eight to nothing decision by the police board to fire Bobby Rialmo. This decision comes and goes against the use of force policy, the civil verdict, and actually, the superintendent also deemed this shooting justified. COPA went out and they got it outside, without our knowledge, got somebody outside to investigate this, and they also came back and said that this shooting was justified. Now, it's four in the morning, it's Christmas night, police officers respond to a call of armed assailant with a baseball bat. When they go there to call, the offender comes out with a baseball bat in his hand, he takes two swings at Officer Rialmo, who took and served time in the military. Alderman Spazado was there at this recommendation by the board. Actually, Eva Delgado from Commonwealth Edison, or People's Gas, rather, could have decided not to go forward with this. This case should not have gone forward. Like I said, a civil jury decided that he was not guilty. Okay? The biggest problem here is we have to find out, when can we defend ourselves? Because right now, there's only three options. Number one, he could have took the bat in the head. Number two, he could have turned and could have got the bat in the back of the head. Or number three, he goes down to the police board and also gets a bat in the head. The police board is firing people. They're not making good decisions, okay? These people are not qualified to make decisions on what police officers do on a regular basis. Connor versus Graham states that a police officer who is reasonably on the scene, what decision would he make at that time? Police officers across the city are asking me, now what? What do I do now? Okay? Because actually, it paralyzes the police officer from making any decision at all. I mean, we're going to fight this, because this is the wrong decision. A police officer, just like the police officer who got shot last night, a police officer or a regular person is entitled to defend themselves when something happens like this. A bad decision? I think that we need to dissolve this police board, because they've actually outlived their usefulness. They are not qualified to make decisions about what police officers do on a regular basis, and that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The next speaker is Mr. Andrew Nelson.
My dear Madam President, at my earliest convenience, I intend to promote a legally binding referendum amending Illinois Cities and Villages Act of 1872, stipulating that upon passage, all future Chicago municipal primary elections shall be held on the day of the midterm general election, with its subsequent runoff held on the first Monday in March, both with early voting and the mayoral inauguration set on the last Monday in April. This way, we'll get a much higher voter turnout, streamline the process, and preclude losing November midterm candidates from running for mayor in February. Concomitant with this, candidates for Chicago Police Superintendent and Chicago School Board President shall go through a process of getting their names on that November midterm Chicago municipal primary election ballot, with the three top candidates getting their names on the March runoff ballot. If none gets 50% plus one, whoever is elected mayor shall choose from the top three who will have been elected by Chicago voters. This will allow for voting, for vetting, and require prospective CPD superintendents and CPS board presidents to answer to the people before they get elected and/or appointed. I hope we get this done in time for an early November 2022 Chicago municipal primary election date, followed by an early March 2023 runoff and late April 2023 citywide inaugural. Any thoughts on the efficacy of this? Because there are so many candidates running, and then they lose.
Please remember, Mr. Nelson, this is not a forum for questions.
Well, it's just a practical thing to...
Mr. Nelson?
Yes?
Please continue your comments.
I am. It's a practical thing to have a much higher voter turnout, along with all the November midterm election candidates, and thereby have fewer mayoral candidates running. And it's something that I'm sure the people of Chicago would want, because we've had too many elections...
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Nelson. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Ronald Jackson. I'm sorry. Correction. The next speaker is Mr. John Cadenzara.
All right. Good morning. So, I've been coming here on a regular basis for over a year now, and I guess some of you probably don't like my style, but I'm not here for style points. I'm here for substance, and not a single person in this chamber can question my substance of what I speak at this microphone. Only one time in last July and August, when I had brought up about the improper police detail at the Cardinals residence in violation of church and state, did anybody make a phone call to have that finally ceased after 40 years, but nobody followed up to get that money recouped from the archdiocese, which I'm still waiting for action on. But everything since then that I've said at this microphone is pretty much largely go ignored. Now, like I said, you might not like my style, but I'm here to point out the hypocrisy in this chamber and in the police department. And you think maybe I'm a lunatic, whatever the case may be, but there's a price to pay for speaking out. And I personally can tell you right now, I have been sent to the police board that Pat Murray talked about on three BS cases that were extremely far-reaching in one purpose only, to shut me up and get me to stop doing what I'm doing and speaking out. Obviously, I'm still here. I beat all three of those police board cases. But there is many suspension times, financial hardships, suspensions. Yet again, I'm told that there's another attempt to fire me, sitting at Internal Affairs right now, waiting for a signature, because I dare call out the superintendent and Commander Ponticor for his march on the expressway and Commander Ponticor's official misconduct of deleting the report from the system that I brought to this chamber on two separate occasions, and not a single member has pushed the issue. What point is having a public comment section if all you're going to do is sit there and listen to the peasants at the microphone speak and not take any action or any investigation on what's being presented to you members? That's your job. Your job is to actually do the things that people are bringing to your attention, but it hasn't happened, and it continues to not happen. Again, it's wonderful that the mayor speaks so highly and concerned about the police officer that was tragically shot last night, but her actions don't meet her words. I'll just let you all know, we were notified yesterday at the FOP meeting that the city and the FOP have not reached agreement on one single article of agreement, and we have been without a contract for almost two and a half years now, but she jumped over every hoop, bent over backwards for the teachers, with the promise that we were next, even though their contract wasn't expired and ours was. They're not doing anything to make this a legitimate process. It's literally two and a half years without one single agreement. Think about that. But she's going to sit there and say how much she appreciates the police? Well, start putting your words into actions and prove it. And lastly, I'll just say this, Epstein didn't commit suicide.
Thank you, Mr. Cadenzara. The next speaker is Mr. Ronald Jackson.
Good morning, City Council. Two days ago, Sinai Healthcare showed a documentary called "Chicago at the Crossroads", a depiction of Chicago over 50 years ago. Fifty years where the city of Chicago started out with social services. Fifty years later, the city of Chicago, those social services have all but vanished, but a great many, like Alderman Burke and a few others, have still maintained the representation for those that they call constituents. We realize how important mental health is, but I find it absolutely insulting when the city of Chicago cannot come up with an insurance company that will give police insurance, liability insurance. I find it insulting when the mayor runs around in the black communities and talks about rideshare, when she won't walk right down the street to LaSalle and Jackson and Financial Place and ask the stockbrokers to just put a nickel on every transaction for the next year and add a penny per transaction for the next 99 years. But we could talk about parking meters for 99. We could talk about outsourcing the skyway. Those were things before she came on board, but the things that are being established now, you're asking in April for people to be counted. How can you be counted if you're not represented? And 50 people in this establishment are basically saying that those lives of the homeless, those lives of the people that are institutionalized in either nursing homes or whatever, those lives aren't there. We're not getting that representation. Mental health services, we still don't have an adequate position on what mental health services is. That $25 million that we talked about during the campaign, that's not even a conversation now. Establishing a task force to figure out where we could actually shore up mental health services throughout the city, that hasn't transpired. I don't understand what you're asking for in April, and I don't believe that people should stand up for representation that they're not receiving. So, I would say no to Chicago adding any more representation until the people are properly represented, especially as far as mental health care, homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The next speaker is Mr. Mike Underwood.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Underwood. I'm an elected representative on the board directors of the paternal police. I'm here to speak of the two and a half years that the police have worked without a contract. I realize that much of the blame for this belongs to the previous administration, and you came at the office with a full plate, Madam Mayor. I'd like to urge the current administration to bargain in good faith with the FOP and come to a reasonable agreement as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. The next speaker is Mr. Jacob Lang. Jacob Lang.
Howdy. Good morning. I come as an ambassador of the Borgen Project, which is a national campaign aimed at bringing global poverty to the eyes of Congress through advocacy. I realize this isn't a congressional meeting chamber. At the same time, the developing world shares a lot of the same issues that the city of Chicago does. Give me a second, actually. And especially as it comes to jobs. As the economy develops abroad, so does it here. In 2013, that was the most recent statistic, I was able to get 339,000 jobs, or, yeah, jobs and exports were going, or coming from Chicago, excuse me. And with that, our jobs and exports are benefiting that global economy, helping improve those economies, and, yeah, you know what? What I'm saying is, the global economy is so deeply attached to the Chicago economy because our exports help flourish, or help burgeoning economies develop abroad. Right now, on the table in Senate is the Global Fragility Act, which works proactively to end global conflict and issues that promote poverty, or situations of poverty, really. And I'm asking the city council to write a letter to Senator Duckworth to support the Global Fragility Act. Senator Durbin has already done that. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. The next speaker is Mr. Colt Seidman.
Good morning. My name is Colt, and I'm a leader on the mental health justice team at One Northside. I have struggled with homelessness in the city of Chicago since I was 23 for three years. I'm also a member of the LGBTQ community, which has impacted my struggles with housing. Right now, Chicago is in a housing crisis. There are over 86,000 people experiencing homelessness, but Chicago does not have enough affordable housing to house us all. Thousands of people have been stuck on housing wait lists for years with no end in sight. That's not right. I'm a queer person living with mental illness, and being homeless has had a serious impact on my mental health. It's harder to get and take medication when you don't have a permanent address. Being in a shelter, it's really hard to focus on my treatment, especially because some of medication comes in needle form, it's hard to find a safe place to take it. There are very few shelters in Chicago with trans competent care, which makes me feel really unsafe. My mental illness has gotten a lot worse the times where I haven't had stable housing, and I know that's true for many people in Chicago. As of yesterday, I was experiencing homelessness, but I just found out I was placed in an SRO. I feel relieved to now have stable housing, but it took a long time to get here. The SROs available in Chicago are extremely limited. All of my services are on the North Side, but there are no availability in North Side SROs. Many SROs have been converted to luxury housing, leaving less and less options for low-income housing. The gentrification is violence. I am lucky to have housing, but not everyone is so lucky. I'm here to say today that housing should not depend on luck. Everyone in Chicago deserves to have a safe and stable home. Mayor Lori Lightfoot says she cares about youth and LGBTQ homelessness, but is only giving a $5 billion increase to affordable housing. That is not enough. Our city needs real investment in affordable housing, and the mayor's budget doesn't cut it. I call on our adult people to vote no on the proposed budget. Chicago needs real investment, not the crumbs of funding we see reflected in this budget. We need bread, not crumbs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seidman. The next speaker is Mr. Ricardo Flores.
Good morning. I'm here talking about CineSpace and the lack of Latinos in the film industry and the studios. They always request 30% tax break, but 30% of the population is getting ignored. And what I'm opposing is, I'm opposing the parking lot they're doing on 31st. If they're not going to include the community, why should we, we should stand for the demands? Like, they want, 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 we want too. We want to be in there, we want to be part of them, and I think they should bring back that ordinance, where the Aldermen have a say to who films in their community, where they sign the permits, and they're bypassing that. And everybody is seeing that, and the Aldermen are getting ignored, the same way that the developer from New York is coming and bypassing them. I say they get, have a little more say on who films in their community and who gets hired in the community. If they're coming to film in Little Village, Logan Square, or Pillson, or any community that comes to film, they should have more people there. Home Park, they should have more people from that community working in the industry. There's a lot of actors, there's a lot of talent here, and they say they have 16,000 local jobs. Most of those jobs are not local. Some people that come from LA, some people come from New York. The catering is not local. They brought them from LA. Just because they have an address here in Chicago doesn't make them local. And they're playing the city, saying they're going to do this and do that. They're not really doing nothing for the community. They're going to come in, they're doing a hostile takeover, because if you go to CineSpace, the one on 15, the neighbors don't want them there. They closed down the streets, and, I forgot a minute, sorry. They closed down the streets, and I know a lot of people who are not happy. And that's the same thing that's going to happen in Little Village. If they move in there, they're going to take over the neighborhood, stop blocking the streets, and I just, yeah, the gentrification. I know, if you know LA, they have other studios, but they also got Skid Row. We don't need that in Chicago. We don't need to have that in Chicago. And the only thing I'm asking is that if the Aldermen get power on who, who has, who comes and films into the neighborhood? If they have, they can sign permits, who films in the neighborhood instead of going straight to the city? Then maybe some of the Aldermen could back us up and have more Latina inclusion in the film industry. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. The next speaker is Ms. Jackie Page.
Good morning, City Council. Flora, Madam Mayor, and attendees of this city council meeting. It is with a doubtful continence that I stand here today. You see, Madam Mayor, I did not believe you could deliver on your promise of an open and a fair government, given the playing field in which you have to engage. I wanted to be wrong. I dare to hope I was wrong, but when you take stock of what has happened in the past six months, Madam Mayor, your efforts as a change agent needs work. A police superintendent who has a record of running an abusive and divisive police force is chosen to lead a department that the Justice Department determined to be abusive and in need of reform. This is more of the same. You announced an end to automatic privilege, and you replace it with a move that was worthy of Machiavelli. Letters of denial have to go through a municipal bureaucrat who is beholden to you, Madam Mayor, machine politricks by any other name. The citizens of Chicago are being illegally taxed through bogus traffic camera and tow company tickets. Tickets are issued for vehicles driving in the yellow that change to red while the cars are still in motion. There is a municipal ordinance that said this should not be, yet it still occurs. Citizens are being preyed upon by predatory tow companies who recklessly flaunt municipal laws. Citizens are supposed to be allowed to move their vehicles if they arrive to their vehicles before a tow truck arrives, yet they're not allowed to do this because tow companies are allowed to talk, I mean, to boot the cars. I mentioned this before at a city council meeting, and this still occurs. In regards to the cannabis lottery, I expressed concern about this last month, and as suspected, black participation was zero to none. Why even have an equity officer? And people wonder why people, black people, people that are born here in this country are asking for reparations. Chicago has become an anarchist city, flaunting federal laws when it declares itself a sanctuary city, yet the Chicago Housing Authority stands on federal laws when it says no smoking of pot on CHA property. You can't stand on federal law for one instance and flaunt it for another. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. This is a tale of two cities. Chicago has finally united its citizens.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Page. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Ms. Kathy Powers.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, my new illustrious city council. Glad to be here. My name is... My name is Kathy Powers, K-A-T-H-Y-P-O-W-E-R-S. I am a member of the Community Mental Health Board. Oh, Mayor Lightfoot, could you look up, please? Could you get off your phone?
Ms. Powers, please.
Are you listening? She's not listening. I don't know, I don't know. I'm a member of Northside Action for Justice. I am a member of the Alliance for Community Services. Most importantly, I am a former client of the Northtown Rogers Park Mental Health Clinic that closed in 2012. I constantly battle, I'm always on the verge of suicide, and I need my, my community support because I really, I really, I don't have any family support, and my city doesn't really seem to care whether I live or die. I, I go to C4 mental health clinics, and I'm on my fourth psychiatrist right now. I understand I have to wait until January to get a telepsychiatrist, if they even get it together by then. I am challenged by food and housing issues, and I don't feel that Mayor Lightfoot has done her due diligence in, regarding the mental health clinics. I feel she doesn't talk to the people. I feel she should not give money to private organizations when she could invest in public services. This money should not go out of the city, it should be part of the city. Invest in the public. I'm outraged that a mental health clinic exists in Lawndale, it's a boarded up garage. It's a boarded up garage for years and years and years, and still remains. They keep saying, oh, well, we're going to move it, we're going to move it. This is not kosher. This is not kosher, Mayor. And I just want to say, please, invest in the public, you won't regret it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. The next speaker is Ms. Badana Rheingold.
Hello, my name is Badana Rheingold. I'm also on the Community Advisory Board for the Chicago Department of Mental, the Chicago Department of Health. We're very, very upset that the City Council budget is not supporting the Chicago Department of Public Health at the level that it needs to be to address the public health needs of the city. We all acknowledge that there is an epidemic of mental health unserved needs and violence prevention needs. We have a very massive problem, and we have not had the study that was promised to really identify where the desert islands are of unserved people. We have not gone ahead with really investing in what is needed to get a good viable program to serve people with mental illnesses or trauma, which is endemic. And this is, at this point, acknowledged nationally, that this is a real need, and we need the City Council to acknowledge that the Department of Public Health is not being financed at a level that allows them to really provide for the health needs of the city, not just in mental health, but in lead poisoning, in water safety, all kinds of issues, that they do not have the resources because the city has not acknowledged the public health needs of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rheingold. All speakers who have timely submitted witness slips for the public comment period have been heard.
This concludes the public comment period. Before we move on to the next item, I wanted to acknowledge someone who is here with us in a gallery from downstate, and that's Clerk Valencia's mother. So, thank you for being here.
I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office. Expression of opposition to proposed zoning reclassification of property at 2602-2638 North Emmett Street. I, City Clerk Valencia, also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the special meeting held on October 23, 2019, which required by statute to be published in public or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 13, 2019, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of Journal, the Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on November 13, 2019, which required by statute to be published or book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in the pamphlet form on November 20, 2019, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of Journal, Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also informed the City Council that the ordinance is authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approvals of year 2020 budgets, and authorization of service provider agreements for special service areas number 4, 5, 18, 19, 24, 25, 26, 29, -2014, 33, 34, 35, -2015, 38, 54, 55, 60, and 71, which were passed by the City Council November 13, 2019, which requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on November 15, 2019. I also informed the City Council that the ordinance is authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approval of year 2020 budgets, authorization of service provider agreements, and amendment of year 2019 appropriation levy and agreement ordinances for special service areas number 2-2016 and 43 were passed by the City Council on November 13, 2019, which requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on November 15, 2019. I also transmit here with the correction of December 12, 2018, City Council journey of the proceedings, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to committee reports. Finance Committee Chairman Wagasback.
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met November 19, 2019, item number one is an ordinance revising the levy of taxes collected upon all property within the city of Chicago for the year 2019 to reflect an increase in the share of the levy used to fund debt services in the amount of $1,659,000 and a decrease to the share of the levy used for special and corporate purposes, namely pensions in the same amount. This revised allocation is due to changes in the estimated impacts of the proposed refunding. Item number two is an ordinance that allows for the issuance of up to $1.5 billion in general obligation and sale tax bonds. The sale tax bonds will be issued through the Sales Tax Securitization Corporation. The GO bonds are backed by up to $190 million in property taxes every year through 2047. The STSC bonds are backed by sales tax revenue collected by the state and distributed to the city. Bond proceeds will be used to retire old bond debt that is at a higher interest, among other lawful purposes. This retirement is projected to save the city $215 million, all of which is being banked to help close this year's deficit. Item number three is an ordinance that would authorize the levy of taxes upon all property within the city of Chicago for the year 2020 that is subject to taxation in the amount of $1,539,033,000. The total property taxes extended or abated for 2019 were $1,474,222,000. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2020 are $1,539,300,000. This represents a 4.4% increase over the previous year. Item number four is an ordinance amending various sections of the Municipal Code of Chicago, including Section 2, 3, 7, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 17. Madam President, Alderman Dowell and I move to defer and publish all four of these items at the same time.
These matters will be deferred. Thank you, Chairman.
This concludes the report of the Committee on Finance, meeting of November 19, 2019. Thank you, Madam President.
Committee on Budget, Chairman Dowell.
Yes, good morning, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on November 18, 2019, the committee has a series of reports. Item number one is a substitute ordinance amending the 2019 Annual Appropriation Ordinance within Fund Number 925 for the Office of the Mayor, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Family and Support Services. I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Zalasky Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardness, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Chicho Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Talafaro, Alderman Raboyas, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Spazado, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Apolatano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunny, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon.
Skip Silverstein.
Saving the best for last.
This matter passes 48 to zero. Chairman Dowell.
Move to reconsider, Alderman.
Motion for reconsideration, Alderman Thompson.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
There's a motion to reconsider. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion to reconsider is denied.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Madland Industries LLC approving the Neighborhood Opportunities Fund grant at 328 North Albany Avenue in the 27th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote previously applied to item number one on the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item three is a substitute ordinance amending the 2019 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Alderman Wagasback joins me in moving to defer and publish this item.
The matter will be deferred.
Item number four is an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority in Cook County for the allocation of motor fuel tax funds to the Chicago Transit Authority pursuant to the Regional Transportation Authority Act. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote previously applied to item number one on the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing expenditure of 2020 motor fuel tax funds allocated to the city of Chicago. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so moved.
Item number six is a substitute ordinance correcting and updating various municipal code provisions, the Code Corrections Ordinance. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number seven is an ordinance introduced by Alderman Emma Mitz of the 37th Ward, transferring funds within the City Council Committee on License and Consumer Protection. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number eight is an ordinance introduced by Alderman Roderick Sawyer of the 6th Ward, transferring funds within the City Council Committee on Health and Human Relations. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Items nine and 10 are a substitute ordinance containing amendments to the 2020 Annual Appropriation Ordinance and the text portion of that ordinance and the 2020 Annual Appropriation Ordinance as amended. Alderman Wagasback joins me in moving to defer and publish these items.
These matters will be deferred.
Item number 11 is a substitute ordinance as amended, amending municipal code provisions concerning department functions and duties, the Management Ordinance. Alderman Wagasback joins me in moving to defer and publish this item.
That matter will be deferred.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Dowell. The Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Farah.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, November 14, 2019. There were four items before the committee's force consideration. Item number one was held in committee. Item number two, a resolution for the adoption of FEMA-approved 2019 Cook County Multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and 2019 City of Chicago Jurisdictional Annex Document. Item number three was a substitute ordinance as amended for the amendment of Municipal Code Section 10-8-010 by further regulating zones of quiet streets and budding government hospitals and designating various public ways as zones of quiet streets. And item number four was an ordinance for the amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 2-84 by amending, by adding new section 2-84197 concerning quarterly reports on murder and murder clearance rates in the city of Chicago. Items two through four passed by voice vote in committee. If there are no objections, I move for the passage of these items by the last favorable vote of the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building, Chairman Tunny.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which was held a meeting on November 19 of 2019, the following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the appointment of Lynn J. Osmond as a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. I move, I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call, the Budget Committee Report and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Pages one through 14 contain various map amendments in the 47th, 44th, 43rd, 40th, 38th, 35th, 33rd, 32nd, 31st, 30th, 29th, 28th, 27th, 26th, 25th, 20th, 11th, 9th, 8th, 3rd, I should say, and 2nd and 1st wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Pages 12 and 13 contain various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade, in the 46th, 45th, 44th, 42nd, 39th, 35th, 28th, 27th, 23rd, 14th, 11th, 4th, and 2nd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Page 13 also contains one fee waiver for a historical landmark in the 9th ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And on page 13 also contains two demolitions of non-contributing historical landmark buildings in the 43rd and 27th wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Page 13 also contains the historical landmark designation for the Claremont Cottage District, generally located at the 1,000 block of South Claremont in the 28th Ward, and the historical landmark designation for promontory apartments at 5530 through 5532 South Shore Drive in the 5th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. We'll now move to the Agreed Calendar.
The City Clerk has transmitted, transmitted to my office 22 resolutions to be included in Agreed Calendar, submitted by the following aldermen: Harris, Mitchell, Garza, Thompson, Curtis, and Smith. Thank you, Madam President. I move passage of the Agreed Calendar.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Madam Clerk, new business.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance; zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety; grants for privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way; and exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Haddon has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Lunt Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Tunny has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-160-100 by repealing Article 2 on March 29, 2020, concerning requirements and restrictions for Wrigley Plaza, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for release of subway rights at 215 North Michigan Owners LLC, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Austin has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds for the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity for the year 2019, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Scott has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman O'Shea has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-8-050 concerning hosting paper shredding event as automatic expense, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for designation of the 25th Precinct of the 13th Ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Quinn also has proposed ordinance for designation of the 36th Precinct of the 13th Ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Laspada has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Armitage Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection; and a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-64-206 concerning hours of operation for parking meters on portion of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Riley and Alderman Smith have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Title 10 by modifying permit fees within the Central Business District, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderman Haddon and Alderman Moore have proposed ordinance for amendment of Section 2-15-090 of the Municipal Code regarding office hours, which is referred to the Committee on Health, Health and Human Relations. And Alderman Martin and others have proposed ordinance empowering the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings of the independent monitors consent decree reports, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the Journal.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal or move that to be approved.
All those in favor of approving the Journal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Alderman Sichio Lopez, I believe you were out of the chamber at the time that we took the first vote. Do you want to be recognized on the record?
Yes, Mayor, sir. My apologies. I would like, just for the first item on the budget agenda, I would like to record my vote as a yes.
So reflected. Alderman Mitchell, unfinished business.
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
We now move to miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up ordinance to the clerks stating the time and date and time of the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago for Tuesday, November 26, 2019, at 10 o'clock a.m. in the Senate Council Chambers and City Hall.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Roll call on the omnibus, please.
Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Zelaski-Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Sichio Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Talafiero, Alderman Raboyas, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Spazato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunny, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, Alderman Silverstein.
The matter passes 49 to nothing. Alderman Daley Thompson, on a motion to reconsider.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on the omnibus say aye; all opposed, say no. The motion fails. And before we move on, I also want to recognize former Alderman Shirley Coleman, who's in the chamber. Welcome. And maybe Alderman Taylor wants, or Alderman Coleman wants to say something nice about her mother being here for her. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, there being no further business, I move adjournment.
All those in favor say aye; any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The council is adjourned to the next meeting.